And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this August 6, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Lanford.
Sarah.
Here.
Weeland.
Here.
Green.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is Item C, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting July 16?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to read a proclamation. It reads, "Whereas gastroparesis is a debilitating illness that affects roughly 5 million people in the United States, yet little is known in the medical field. Whereas gastroparesis means paralysis of the stomach, which causes debilitating pain, nausea, constant vomiting, malabsorption, and much more. This can lead to serious complications such as malnourishment, dehydration, extreme weight loss, overwhelming fatigue, loss of quality of life, and even death. Whereas there is no known cure for gastroparesis and very few treatment options or medications available, we seek more research, improved medications, additional treatment options, better support, and hope for our future. Whereas we seek to educate the medical community and the general public regarding the devastating effects of this illness and the severe loss of quality of life. We hope that this education will help members of the Cedar Falls community to recognize the challenges associated with gastroparesis and support those who are affected. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of Cedar Falls, proclaim August 2018 as Gastroparesis Awareness Month in the city of Cedar Falls, sign this sixth day of August 2018." I believe we have Nikki Morrissey here for a few minutes to give us a little background.
Hello. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Nikki Morrissey. I have been a resident of Cedar Falls since 1997. I was diagnosed with gastroparesis in 2013. To say that it has been life-altering would be an understatement. My life, my husband Sean's life, and our son Kobe's were changed in an instant. I went from an athletic mom chasing my child around, wrestling, going to the Rock Center to play basketball, and even getting on the ice and skating and playing hockey with him, to a mom who had lost 80 pounds in less than a year and was fighting for her life. In the last two years alone, I bottomed out at 86 pounds. I have been hospitalized over 30 times for various reasons, as severe dehydration, cardiac episodes, seizures, falls, infections, most of which have led to severe sepsis, several times, and also severe malnutrition. I had to have a hysterectomy due to severe anemia. I have had a heart attack that led to a pacemaker being implanted at the age of 39. I have tried and failed feeding tube trials at Mayo Clinic in Rochester. I have also failed locally at attempts of TPN due to refeeding syndrome, DVT blood clots from central lines, and severe sepsis in midlines, picklines, hitmans, Hickman ports, and recently an IV catheter port where I was going in five days a week just for nutrition, or for hydration just to keep my body hydrated. This is a small look into my journey with gastroparesis and the lack of quality of life that comes with it. Each day for us is a new adventure, never knowing what the day will bring. Like many others who suffer from gastroparesis, I too have exhausted all options available to me at this time. I am left literally with no options, no treatments, no medications. I am literally in the fight for my life, and it's daily. There are almost 5 million others fighting their own unique story. Locally, we have been blessed to have found an amazing doctor who is always searching for something new, who listens to us, and who has been there for us more times than I can count. That's what happens when you advocate for yourself, and you spread awareness, and somebody listens. Most aren't as lucky as me. Most don't have their Dr. Kepman that I have. Awareness needs to continue, and thank you to Mayor Brown for taking the step in our community. Thank you also, Mayor Brown, not only for following my story, but also for recognizing the need for more awareness. Thank you for signing this proclamation naming August Gastroparesis Awareness Month for our city. We are so grateful for your support, and we can't thank you enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on, in the agenda, Item D, is there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have one agenda revision under New Business. The Resolution Calendar, Item F, is being pulled.
Thank you. Counsel, get that.
G to F.
G to F, thank you. Item E is Special Order of Business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the 2018 Sidewalk Assessment Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item B, Written Objections Filed with the City Clerk.
I have no written objections on file.
Thank you. Before we move to oral comments from the public, I'll ask city staff to speak upon this public hearing and these proposed plans.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, members of the council. So the 2018 Sidewalk Assessment Project involves the repair of deficient sidewalk for the adjacent property owner and assesses those costs of those repairs back to the property owner. In this case, we are working in Zone 9 of 10 Zones, which the city has broken into. Zone 9 is bordered by Highway 58, the river on the north, Waterloo Road and University Avenue on the south, and then the east city limits. Within that zone, there are 91 properties that have been identified with deficient sidewalks, and the total estimated cost for the construction of this project is $29,884.18.
Great, thank you. I will open up to oral comments from the public on this item. Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the 2018 Sidewalk Assessment Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, it's a public hearing on an associated amendment to the schematic land use map by changing the designation from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial mixed use, and also on property rezoning from R3 to C3 of property located on West 22nd Street. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have one written communication, which was included in the packet. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move to oral comments for the public, I will have, again, city staff fill us in on the public hearing and all that's associated with it. Karen, I think.
Good evening, Mayor, council. This was a fairly complicated application that we received. There were actually three parts to this application that I want to make clear, that there's only two things being considered tonight at the city council. On the map, you can see here, all three of those applications, the only thing being considered tonight are the rezoning and the land use map amendment. The site plan review case that came in with the same application is not on the agenda tonight. Moving on to the land use map amendment request, here's the future land use map that's in the comprehensive plan. You can see the two properties being proposed to be changed from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial and mixed use at 1015 and 1021 West 22nd Street. This area is in the College Hill neighborhood, and that neighborhood, there was a plan adopted in 1993, the College Hill neighborhood plan. So when a request comes in for a change to the land use map, we look at the comprehensive plan and what it says for that particular area of the city. The College Hill neighborhood plan, you can see here, calls for a more cohesive and attractive commercial core, and it shows a concept plan of additional commercial surrounding a parking courtyard. The subject properties in this are on the western part of this commercial core plan. In 2012, the city adopted an overall comprehensive plan that does address College Hill as well, and what it says about College Hill is to extend the streetscape along 22nd Street to improve pedestrian access with wider sidewalks, brick sidewalks, parallel or angled parking to spur local development of more mixed-use storefronts with apartment dwellings above, and to bring mixed-use commercial development between 21st and 22nd Streets to length the upper hill and the lower hill along College Street into a more cohesive, walkable retail So you can see in 2012, there was a shift in focus from that earlier plan from commercial surrounding a parking court to encouraging more mixed-use storefront buildings pulled close to the street with apartment dwellings above. The goal in 2012, that change, was to create that more walkable pedestrian-oriented environment so the streetscape should not be interrupted by unscreened surface parking lots. In staff's analysis, staff found that the proposed amendment to the future land use map to change the designation of 1015 and 1021 West 22nd Street from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial and mixed use is consistent with the College Hill neighborhood plan and the Cedar Falls comprehensive plan, specifically to allow for, this change will allow for rezoning that will allow additional development of mixed-use storefronts consistent with these plans. Moving on to the rezoning that was requested under this application, if the land use map is changed, is approved, that resolution is approved to change, then this rezoning can be considered. The existing zoning of this property is R3 multiple-unit residential. This current zoning, staff's analysis, is that it's unlikely to achieve the comprehensive plan goals due to the larger front setbacks required in this zone and the limited residential densities. Those, we found, were inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning, C3 commercial, urban, is an urban commercial zoning district. It's applied exclusively to downtown and to the College Hill commercial area. It allows a variety of uses, mixed-use development with storefronts located close to the sidewalk with upper-floor residential uses, and it allows a lot of different types of commercial and upper-floor residential and office, and it is the most urban zoning district allowed in the city. With that analysis, we look to see if that rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and staff found that it is consistent with the 2012 comprehensive plan. It allows for an expansion of opportunities for urban mixed-use development in College Hill, encouraging upper-floor apartments that will provide new housing opportunities close to the neighborhood services and to you and I. It has the potential to reduce development pressure on the surrounding lower-scale neighborhoods and enhances, has the potential to enhance the streetscape along 22nd Street. With regard to consistency with the College Hill neighborhood plan, the earlier plan called for C1 zoning in this area, however, that zone is really inconsistent with the more recently adopted comp plan, which calls for those buildings to be closer to the street, supporting a more pedestrian-oriented streetscape. In the subsequent College Hill overlay standards were adopted, subsequent to the neighborhood plan. As a part of the neighborhood plan goals, it called for new zoning, and so after that occurred in 2005, the College Hill overlay amendments were adopted, which mitigates concerns about design expressed in the earlier plan and is consistent with the goal of encouraging additional urban mixed use in College Hill. There were, you know, quite a bit of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there were questions about spot zoning that came up, and so I just wanted to mention that briefly. The commission agreed after discussion that this would not be considered an illegal spot zone because the land is contiguous with the other property that Zone C3 and the comprehensive plan calls for the expansion of the College Hill commercial district in this particular location. And so for those reasons, the commission unanimously agreed that it wouldn't be considered an illegal spot zone. So in summary, then, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends approval of an amendment to the future land use map from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial mixed use for properties located at 1015 and 1021 West 22nd Street, and they also unanimously recommend approval of a rezoning of those same properties from R3 multiple-residence district to C3 high-density commercial. And just a brief clarification on the voting tonight, because there was a, we received a petition of protest. The resolution to amend the future land use map within the comprehensive plan requires just a simple majority, vote of council tonight, but the ordinance to rezone the subject properties from R3 to C3 requires a supermajority vote of council, that's six out of seven, due to the valid protest petition from two neighboring property owners that own more than 25% of the land area within 200 feet of the boundaries of the area being rezoned. The site plan for the specific mixed-use project, just a reminder, is not on the agenda tonight, and approving the amendment to the future land use map and rezoning the properties does not preclude the council from voting a specific site plan up or down on its own merits. I would be happy to answer any questions.
We'll wait for questions when we open up for motions. Second from council, I will open up the public, if they have any insight towards this public hearing. Hearing, yes, sir. Name and address, different meeting.
To Michelle Ling, 3434 Tucson Drive. I oppose this. I was on planning and zoning for a number of years. There is no reason for C3 zoning, with the exception of College Hill and downtown Sierra Falls. This development that we're talking about, yes, you could call it amending the map and all of this other stuff. What you're approving is an apartment building.
No, you got to stay germane. This is for C3 zoning.
Right.
Okay. We got to stay on topic there.
Right. But what you have is a developer skirting parking. They've done it downtown. They're doing it on the hill. What's the biggest bitch on the hill?
We got to tone this down, number one, and I believe you're out of order as far as being germane to this specific site plan.
Okay.
Which is a part of the public.
Fine, but, believe me, amending this, you don't want to go down this slope.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Just your name and address, if you would, please.
Eshan Bajpay, 3831 Converne Lane. On behalf of myself and the client, before I delve into this, I do note that the memorandum addressed to council and the mayor on this issue does reference the 2119 College Street Plan, and while I don't want to delve into it, it is referenced, and at planning and zoning, when this came up, they were specifically discussed together by staff, and so maybe a question to be asked or answered or for food of, for thought is why they're not being brought up together now. Briefly, rezoning of this lot might appear harmless on its face, but it's not, and that's due to the current code interpretations by staff regarding mixed-use buildings and their parking requirements. The consequence of this rezoning must be considered. The staff position is that these mixed-use buildings with one floor of commercial and unlimited apartments requires no parking in this College Hill overlay. Additional commercial lots such as this, because of the staff interpretation, only further enable future massively underparked developments. And because this, because the site plan that we all know what we're talking about is not being considered right now, or in conjunction with rezoning, it's completely unknown what will be built on this rezoned commercial lot if approved. It could be the parking that serves the proposed site plan, or it could be another residential complex that attempts to stack apartments on top of commercial and park none of it, or a very small percentage of it. As long as staff persist in the interpretation of the parking requirements in the College Hill overlay, votes against rezoning such as this are the only way to prevent a slide down the slippery slope of this no-parking required policy.
Thank you. And Karen, just so I can clarify, bringing it forward from the previous speaker, what sort of projects can be developed on the C3, generally speaking?
Right. This is the same zoning that applies downtown and in the existing C3 on the hill, so it allows mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial and upper-floor residential. It allows a wide variety of different types of commercial development.
For council's approval each time?
Right. Right.
Anyone else for public comment?
Dr. Sires, 1937 College Street. I find this all a little confusing. I think Mr. Schilling is correct in understanding what the actual implications of this rezoning is. They seem to be twofold. Either Mr. Dahlstrom's...
Let's, go ahead. Sorry, sorry, go ahead, Doc.
Mixed use.
Thank you.
Will use the parking here, or if it's simply rezoned, as, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Howard mentioned, then anyone, including the owner, could come in and petition to build another mixed-use building. According to the city, a mixed-use building in the C3 zone in the College Hill overlay on College Street may be 120 feet tall, and in this particular location, such a mixed-use building could be 90 feet tall. There seems to be, I think, some confusion over what is actually to be built, but this is what the city says can be built. If you build a partial floor of commercial, you can go 90 feet tall on the total building with no required parking. I think that's actually factual, and that's a part of the problem. So I think that when we're talking about these things, we need to be clear about what's really going on, because I think many people in the public do understand what's happening, and it gets so confusing when we come before the council, and it's easy to lose sight of what's actually happening. Thanks.
Sir, just name and address, please.
Randy Chapman, 703 Union Road. I'm here first and foremost to, in support of my councilperson, Darrell Cruz, and the reason I say that is because when he was running for election, we had talks at great length about representing the people and not having decisions made at the council level before the citizens are heard. I have experience with that. I worked in city government in Waterloo for 30 years. I'm going to be very careful the way I phrase this because somebody's already been chastised for bringing these two projects together, but I will say this. If these lots are, if this area is allowed to rezone, and for some reason or another, they don't end up being parking lots, even though they won't be enough parking for what we all know they're for, by the code, just like Mr. Sires said, they can build more apartments there with insufficient parking. And here's where my point is. I've seen where things have been allowed to be built in the city that I worked for for a long time, and then the taxpayers have to come in and bail the city out. I'm not paying for parking ramps because we're building buildings that don't have enough parking. That's unfair for me to be expected to do that. It's unfair for all citizens to be expected to do that, because essentially, when these big buildings go up, whether we're talking about the one we're not talking about or other ones, that makes that area a no-go zone for those of us that want to be able to go somewhere and park and get out and frequent businesses. And I'm here to tell you, if anybody here thinks that college students don't all bring their cars, they haven't paid attention. The young lady that came from you and I a long time, and I've been watching this on TV, a long time ago, that spoke and said, "They all have cars, and they don't walk behind the dome and park." She hit the nail on the head. It's too bad she's not here tonight. That's my piece. I don't want to subsidize a developer's parking lots, and I do not want to subsidize the city for allowing him to do it.
Thank you. Any more further from the public hearing?
Dan Rendell, Slingshot Architecture, Des Moines, Iowa, 305 East Court Avenue. I'm speaking, representing the development team on this project in particular, and just to speak very clearly about, our goals really align with the comprehensive plan in that we see future development going down 22nd Street here that encourages connectivity, walkability, multiple modes of transportation, and mixed-use development that serves the student population and furthers the cause of really creating a rich urban environment next to the campus that promotes students to come to campus. It's an ass, that could be an asset to the college moving forward. So those are the goals, but anyway, to really just focus on the C3 zoning, the C3 zoning will allow, allow the comprehensive plan to be executed much more in line with the C3 zoning versus the current zoning. So these are the two parcels that our development team has, has under control. We'd love to see the street continue to transform that way, but walkable, dense, mixed-use development, and, and that's what our intention is to use these parcels for. Want to meet the, meet the needs of future development there and in alignment with those plans. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Greetings. James Kearns, 3123 Cottonwood Lane. I'm here in support of that plan. Watched that Planning and Zoning meeting. These are volunteers who give up two days, two evenings a month to seriously consider the future of our city. They don't necessarily have any skin in the game, other than they want a great city. Unanimously approve this. Took it very seriously. If you watched that discussion, I'm sure you did. I know you took, that you saw that they took it very seriously. The comprehensive plan for that area is what it is. It's our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan. If this development, this lot rezoning is consistent with that comprehensive plan, that should bear a lot of weight on how our council votes.
their cars, they haven't paid attention. The young lady that came from you and I a long time, and I've been watching this on TV, a long time ago that spoke and said, "They all have cars, and they don't walk behind the dome and park." She hit the nail on the head. It's too bad she's not here tonight. That's my piece. I don't want to subsidize a developer's parking lots, and I do not want to subsidize the city for allowing him to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else further from the public hearing?
Dan Rendell, Slingshot Architecture, Des Moines, Iowa, 305 East Court Avenue. I'm speaking, representing the development team on this project in particular. And just to speak very clearly about, our goals really align with the comprehensive plan, in that we see future development going down 22nd Street here that encourages connectivity, walkability, multiple modes of transportation, and mixed-use development that serves the student population and furthers the cause of really creating a rich urban environment next to the campus that promotes students to come to campus. It's an ass, that could be an asset to the college moving forward. So those are the goals, but anyway, to really just focus on the C3 zoning, the C3 zoning will allow, allow the comprehensive plan to be executed much more in line with the C3 zoning versus the current zoning. So these are the two parcels that our development team has, has under control. We'd love to see the street continue to transform that way, but walkable, dense, mixed-use development, and, and that's what our intention is to use these parcels for. Want to meet the, meet the needs of future development there and in alignment with those plans. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Greetings. James Kearns, 3123 Cottonwood Lane. I'm here in support of that plan. Watched that planning and zoning meeting. These are volunteers who give up two days, two evenings a month to seriously consider the future of our city. They don't necessarily have any skin in the game, other than they want a great city. Unanimously approve this. Took it very seriously. If you watched that discussion, I'm sure you did. I know you took, that you saw that they took it very seriously. The comprehensive plan for that area is what it is. It's our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan. If this development, this lot rezoning is consistent with that comprehensive plan, that should bear a lot of weight on how our council votes. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anyone further before I close the hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Item four is resolution amending the schematic land use map by changing the designation from high-density residential to neighborhood commercial mixed-use for property located on West 22nd Street. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I will open it up for discussion with council. Dismissed, Mr. Wieland.
I don't want to be first going on this one, but I will. We're very fortunate, Cedar Falls, that we have developers that come in here and want to develop it. And one thing we're short on is commercial, residential commercial that fits in with the area. This is simply a rezoning to provide more property for a developer to come in here and provide beautiful structures, whatever they are. We've heard fear tactics so far that they think one particular project's going to come in. It's a project that's been rejected once, and yet they're so fearful, they're bringing that up as an argument against a rezoning request to simply change the zoning of the property. Don't do it. It's a slippery slope. It is not a slippery slope. P&amp;Z voted 100% to approve this rezoning, so we have more commercial property available for development. Why wouldn't we take advantage of that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Blanford?
I just wanted to note that, I think you all received a statement from our, you and I student liaison, Jacob Madden. The students, I appreciate the students taking the time to evaluate the proposal. This is kind of the exact intention of why we have that liaison position. I think they provided a pretty well-thought-out analysis, and I appreciate them doing that, so.
Anyone further?
I would just add to both Dave and Richard's comments. I really appreciate what he was saying about the work that planning and zoning does. I don't think any of us fully appreciate how seriously they take that. In many respects, no offense to people up here, but I think they might be better-versed in a lot of these issues than we are. And it, I would be loath to disagree with a unanimous recommendation from P&amp;Z. And the other part here that I think is really critical is that we have a comprehensive plan that the city goes through every number of years to do purposeful planning in this community, and to be thoughtful about how we do it, but to think about the future and not just circle the wagons and protect what we've got, but to think about, what's the next generation? How is this community going to develop? And to turn my back on the comprehensive plan, or the work of planning and zoning, and not approve this ordinance would be, I could not comfortably do that. So I hope we'll all consider the, the whole long-range planning aspect of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Green?
I just see that since this plan, or the, the changes are brought up on their own without a site plan or any other consideration that we're supposed to have before us tonight, looking at the, what's being brought forward, it complies with city code, and it follows the comprehensive plan, not looking at whether this would be a parking lot or some other structure, seeing that this is the direction the city has stated it wants to move forward to, I feel comfortable with my vote.
Thank you. Anyone further? It's been motion second. This requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That does pass per current indication in this area, right? Item five is pass an ordinance amending section 29107 of the Code of Ordinances by removing property located on West 22nd Street from the R3 to the C3 upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Once again, open it up for council, if they'd so desire. Requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
That does fail to pass. Moving on to item six, a public hearing on proposed amendments to chapter 29 zoning and chapter 27 utilities of the Code of Ordinances relative to the city's floodplain regulations. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file.
Thank you. Before public comments, I think we have city staff once again to speak on the public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Council members, this is ordinance amendments to chapter 29 of the zoning ordinance with floodplain sections, and then there's some, a couple of sections in the utilities ordinance to correspond with these changes in chapter 27. These are changes brought from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for some new updates to definitions and performance standards for floodplain management.
Thank you very much. Anyone further from the public to speak on this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed and ask on item seven, is there a motion to pass ordinance amending chapter 29 and chapter 27 not to the city's floodplain regulations upon its first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning agreement relative to conditions of the R4 residential zoning district for property located in the Midway Business Park. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections?
I have no written objections on file.
Thanks. Once again, I think David's here to explain this particular portion of the public hearing.
Thank you. Yes, this Midway Business Park is located near the northeast corner of Green Hill Road and Cedar Heights Drive. It was a nine-lot subdivision. The rezoning was changed from R1 to R4 in 1995, and then early 2000s, around 2003, the Midway Business Park addition was, was created. And as part of that rezoning, the R4 district allows professional office use and other uses like residential and, and hotels and, and higher-density developments, but at that time, the developer just limited the uses to professional office only. So right now, that, since that plant was approved in 2003, the First Security State Bank is located there, and then the new office building just to that west was just recently built for, for that. So this request is not changing the zoning designation, it's just allowing a new use that is also permitted in the R4, which is a senior housing facility, and the idea is to develop a 16-unit senior facility on lots seven and eight of this, this park. So it's gone through Planning and Zoning Commission. We did send out notices to the surrounding property owners, and there was a couple that came in during one of the P&amp;Z meetings. Just want to make sure that the site plan meets all the setbacks, and that's the idea of, we're going to run that through, well, the site plan itself would be just, just staff-level review, but it does satisfy all the ordinance's requirements.
Thank you. I will open up for anyone else in the public for all comments on this public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing, hearing closed. Item nine is resolution approving and authorizing execution of a zoning agreement amendment relative to property located in the Midway Business Park addition. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Yes.
I'm just curious why the site plan use is allowed to be discussed on this issue when we did not discuss it on the earlier issue? I know this is not rezoning, but it's allowing the permitted use of a zone.
Again, when that was rezoned, the uses were limited to certain, just basically professional office. So the petitioner's actually asking for a permitted use to be added to that list of uses, so to speak, in this, just in this subdivision here we're talking about. So it's really a use question on the, on the zoning. We're not redoing, redoing the zoning. It's just allowing that senior facility to, to occur. You have something.
I would also state that this, there's not a site plan that's being considered by council tonight. It's just simply a change to the conditional zoning agreement that it was adopted. So it's a rezoning, it's not a site plan review.
Yeah, but there wasn't a site plan on the other item either.
Yes, that's correct. Right.
Any other questions by council?
I'm just kind of curious about, are we, not anticipating a whole lot of increase in traffic at that corner? It's not the safest, if I know what we're talking about, where the, by the bank.
Yeah, this, this lot is located at the northeast corner of the bank, kind of across the street.
At that same entrance?
Yes, yep.
But not a, not a big increase in?
Well, this is a, this is a proposed facility for seniors that don't drive.
Okay.
So it's kind of staff and visitor-only.
Okay.
Anything further from council? The motion second requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 10 is pass an ordinance rezoning property located in the Midway Business Park addition pursuant to provisions of a zoning agreement. This is upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Again, any comment from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is old business. F1 is pass an ordinance 2928 amending chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to butchering and disposal of dead animals upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is new business, the consent calendar. The following items will be added upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately. For that such discussion, is there any such request from council?
A is an alpha, Mr. Mayor.
A is an alpha. Anyone else from the public or council? Hearing and seeing none, I'll summarize the items of the consent calendar minus A. B indeed is receive and file the city council work session minutes of July 16th. C is receive and file departmental monthly reports. D is receive and file the plans for the Cedar Falls Public Library remodel project. E is receive to file the plans for the 2018 Seal Code project. F has approved the application of Western Home Communities for a fireworks display permit for September 8th. G is approving special event requests, and H is approving various permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus A?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item A does receive and file the committee the whole minutes of July 16th relative to the following items, review code section 14-149, the levy update, and bills and payrolls. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. I will open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes as written. First, the spelling of Sarah Kianti, or is actually Kiani, that should be K-I-A-N-I. And then also request that the public speaker, Mark Miller, his name be changed to Mark G. Miller for differentiation.
Counsel, there's an amendment, a motion to amend item A for spelling of a name and clarifying another name in the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Going back to the original motion, I think, are we okay? We're okay, aren't we?
Go back and then adopt, yes.
We do have to adopt, oh, sure, absolutely, sorry. So the original motion second to approve A in its entirety, there's a motion second. All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So A does pass in its entirety. Thank you. Moving on to item two is a resolution calendar. The following items will be added upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests an item to be pulled separately for such discussion. Any such request from council?
I'd like to pull C.
C is in Charlie?
Correct.
C? Anyone else from council? From the public? I'll summarize the resolution calendar minus item C. A is a resolution naming official depositories for the city of Cedar Falls. B is approving adopting the recommendation of the community center and senior services board relative to a community center rental fee schedule. D is a resolution approving the Pinnacle Ridge subdivision plots. E is approving a highway corridor and greenbelt overlay zoning district site plan. F has been polled. G is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a lease for temporary use relative to private development. H is approving and authorizing submission of a REAP grant for the Clay Street Park. I is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement relative to the downtown levy improvements project. J is a resolution setting August 20th as the date of public hearing on the proposed plans for the Cedar Falls Library remodel project. K is a resolution setting August 20th as the date of public hearing on the proposed plans for the 2018 Seal Code project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus item C?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item C does read resolution approving and authorizing expenditure of funds for a consultant to develop concepts and cost estimates for potential improvements to Peterson Plaza. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Burr?
I was questioning whether we needed clarification on the dollar amount on this. The report talks about 3,500 with 1,000 being put in by the College Hill Partnership, so I wondered if we needed to put clarification in there that our dollar amount would be 2,500, so that we limit how much money we are paying this consultant, instead of just an open hire a consultant.
Default to staff on that in terms of, or, sorry, Rick?
I can answer that, Mr. Burr. There's actually a couple ways you can look at that. First of all, thank you for bringing that up. The College Hill Partnership, we have individuals here from the Friends of the Peterson Plaza and College Hill Partnership. In order to get this project going, they have indicated they'd be happy to dedicate $1,000 towards that consultant. Staff indicated that if city council would rather that money be used for capital improvements in the future, that could be a possibility also. So I think staff at this time is open for one of two things, that, that the city budget out of the municipal operations and programs would fund the entire study, or if the city council desired $2,500 from our budget and $1,000 towards that study from the partnership. So we are, I believe, we're open to both of those suggestions.
I was just concerned that we needed to put at least a limit on it so that it didn't come back at $7,000, you know, even if we limited it to 3,500.
And that's correct. We did receive a proposal from this particular consultant that that was the top of their project costs at this time.
Any further discussion from council? It's been a motion second that says require, require a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, does council have any items for referral this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Back on November, in November of 2016, council voted on an ordinance allowing, or potentially allowing, for urban chickens. I would like to see that verbiage brought back to the council for another vote. I've been contacted recently by a number of residents, and then in that discussion, looked back through how many people contacted me back then about that, and I would like to see the council take another vote about it.
Another vote on the agenda, Mr. or, Mr. Miller, or go to committee and discuss?
If the committee's the appropriate place to start with it again, then so be it.
It's totally up to you.
And that can be the exact same verbiage, so to limit staff time in that, as far as I'm concerned.
There is a motion to bring back urban chickens?
I'll second that.
Frank has seconded. I'll open it up for discussion with, yes, Mr. Wieland.
Any council member has the right to bring back any decisions we made in the past with what is called a referral. It's interesting to note that in 16 years in council, we had no referrals back from anybody. Now, in the last three months, we've had three of them. I look at referrals as something when you get new information from their constituents that are concerned about, oh, the information wasn't covered when you made the decision, in this case on chickens endowed. That's a good reason to do it. All these decisions that have come back so far are four-three votes. That means they were controversial when they were, when they were voted on the first time. So if the goal is to get new information that these people present to us to make a decision, then I can see bringing it back. But if there's no new information, why would we bring it back, other than it was a four-three decision? So, my comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would say, just as an alternative, one of the big differences, too, is that there are different council members on council.
That's right, there are different councils.
That may represent a difference in culture and in thinking as well, and that should be taken into account for any kind of consideration for, for council votes.
Mr. Blanford, sorry.
I would have to agree with Councilman Wieland.
I would have to agree with Councilman Wheeler. This council voted on this issue less than two years ago and voted it down based on some, I think, very legitimate concerns about public health and liability, and I don't think we should be relitigating this
So there's a motion to bring it back, and forgive me because I was writing some notes down, to committee?
To committee is fine.
To committee for discussion. I guess I could ask staff as far as a background, but I guess I just would want to find out and see if council wants to go back to committee, and if they bring that information back, we can do it at that time. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Can I see the nays, please? Three nays. That motion does pass for referral. Any other referrals from city council this evening? Item J, does council have any updates?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Have the pleasure to read an excerpt from the press release for the 35th Annual National Night Out, which occurs tomorrow night. On August 7, 2018, the Cedar Falls Police Department will be working with the Target Retail Store on 214 Viking Plaza Drive to celebrate National Night Out Against Crime from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There will be fingerprinting available to parents for their children, and it will be children-friendly handouts and giveaways along with refreshments and treats. A cookout is scheduled to take place with free hot dogs and bratwursts available on-site. The Cedar Falls Hy-Vee store will be conducting the cookout and assisting with the event. This is a great opportunity to meet and talk with emergency services personnel for children and adults alike while learning about crime prevention and safety. We hope to set a new attendance record, this is the Cedar Falls Police Department, hope to set a new attendance record this year and remind everyone to drive carefully before and after the event. So I can certainly speak for the many years that my family has attended that it's a great event, and the helicopter is a must-see.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Although everything else is great, too.
The dovetail there, I did ask Director Olson to give some statistics for mid-year in terms of crime statistics and where the city lands with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we have a six-month period, or first six months of 2018, so we thought we'd just share some of the stats we have within the police and the fire division. In the first six months of 2018, crime has declined 3.67%, which is certainly good news, at 1,077 reported crimes. Calls for services ticked up slightly at 1.24% at the 8,334 calls that you can see on this screen. Our overall five-year trend is a slight downward trend or downward decline in crime, which is certainly good news. Some of the fire stats we have, we've had four serious structure fires in the first six months of this year, which is exactly the same as we had last year. But we also had three more firefighters responding on average to each one of those structure fires in 2018, which is a testament to our cross-training program, in which we have more individuals cross-trained as firefighters. We've had a 26.5% decline in calls to a total of 921 on the fireside. 53% of those calls are medical. The reason for the decline is primarily due to a different responding level for medical calls because we were responding to nosebleeds, stomach aches, and things in which the paramedics were clearly able to handle and didn't need assistance from other public safety staff. And Councilman Green, thanks for mentioning that National Night Out, police cars, fire trucks, so we hope to have two helicopters there, police bikes, K-9 units. It's really becoming a rather large event at that Target Retail Center for four to seven tomorrow night.
Thank you for both updates there. Moving on to item K, is executive session to evaluate the performance of the city administrator pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51i. Following public forum, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. This requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item L is public forum. Here, speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Name and address, please.
Brent Dalstrom, 5016 Samantha Circle, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Thank you, Mayor and council, and Councilman Wheeler, and thank you for the kind words earlier. Just wanted to, you know, speak briefly on growth, right? And I've also been, I've been oftentimes seen as the growth guy, whether it's building new homes or building some apartments, and there's other great entrepreneurs in the city that are doing it. Want to be very clear, not all growth is great, and not all growth is correct. But to be very clear, we are growing, right? So a year ago today, we had 170 homes for sale in Cedar Falls. Today we have 110. So we have about a 30% decline in available homes for sale. The occupancy rate has ticked up, so we have more people living in the apartments. The statistics are similar in Waverly and Waterloo. So Cedar Valley in a whole is growing. We're doing great things in the Cedar Valley, right? The, so to think about maybe not growing is really a failure to plan on where we are going to grow, right? So where do we want to see this growth? And my passion is the urban cores, downtown, whether that's downtown Cedar Falls, downtown Waterloo, or the university. We have an award-winning downtown in Cedar Falls, and we have an unbelievable university in, at the University of Northern Iowa. It has been the comprehensive plan, it has been the goal to grow those areas and to make them more dense, to get young people where they want to live is in downtown areas. 78% of all millennials will only live in an urban center, okay? 78%. That's according to Jeff Speck in a book that he just wrote, okay? So that's not my stat, that's just somebody else's stat. So if we, growing, it's going to happen, and so right now, what's happening, even though what I've done is grow on the outskirts and grow these 12 plexes that, you know, really become parking and concrete jungles, and they don't really have a feel of walkability now, so you can't have any commercials, so people are having to drive to their places to go, and that will continue to happen. So by turning down things what we talked about earlier today, we're not turning down apartments, we're just turning down where they're going to go. And so we will continue to grow as a town because you are all making incredible decisions, right? The people before us have done a great job, and the people that are currently serving this city are doing a great job. So as a developer, it's not enjoyable to come here and to be turned down. It's, you know, we, it's not what we do. It's not what we come to spend our time doing, because we meet with city staff, this is two years now, and we try to come to a plan, and we do come to a plan that they're going to agree upon. I won't bring a plan in front of you that's not agreed upon by the city staff. It's not my intent. I'm not, and I will never do that. I'll put that on paper. I will never come with a city staff plan, a plan that's not approved by city staff. It's, I don't agree with that. You have all, we've hired them, they are leading our city, they do a great job. So here we are today. It's, I believe, one of the only projects that continually gets turned down after getting city staff approval, and this one was unanimous P&amp;Z and turned down. So I'm here confused, right? And so I said that six months ago. So I think as a developer, it would be great for us to change the code if the council doesn't agree with it, and if we continually turn down things, make it more clear, if that's what we need, which I'd be all for. I'm not here to trick anyone, right? I mean, that was said a few times, and I take offense to that. I'm not here to trick anyone. The rezoning today was about making more parking. So we voted down a parking lot tonight when the concern has been parking. So I just asked, clarification, work on the zoning. It was said a year and a half ago that we're working on a new zoning. Where are we? I would love a report. Where are we on changing the zoning? Make it clear. Do whatever it takes, because what we want as developers, we want to come here and be on your team. We really do. We really want to, we want to be on your team. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all the opportunities the cities have allowed me to have, and I love Cedar Falls. I would love to continue to develop. Please make a plan so that it's more clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalstrom. Ms. Pop, I saw you from the back there.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street. Speaking of really great things, a few weeks ago, we had a horrific fire at our neck of the woods. I just wanted to say thank you to our firefighters, our police, and our public safety officers that responded to this tragedy. They knew what they were doing, and when you go out to visit Target tomorrow on our National Night Out, please ask them what's in their trunk and why do they carry it. You'll find the answers pretty amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Yes, sir. In front, just your name and address, please.
Jeremy Solanick, 1008 Rockland Street. What is the price of a new house? Everything you own, and my children's sense of security. My family struggles emotionally due to the loss of our home. Why did it happen? The city brags about all the firefighters and PSOs they have. Then why did our house burn down on May 2, 2017, after already having two fires put out on May 1, 2017, then just a kitchen fire? What happened that night? Who decided our house did not need to be checked on? A mail carrier delivers mail, a teacher teaches, a hairstylist cuts hair, a contractor builds, and a firefighter puts out fire. Not any of the above, nor my neighbors or my family members. After I addressed the city council days after the fire destroyed our house, Jeff Olson announced that the city is changing its policies for monitoring fire scenes after our Cedar Falls home was destroyed by fire after reigniting twice within 24 hours. Please note, this policy is changed is because of our house fire. Jeff Olson apologized to me that the fire rekindled, stating that in the newspaper that he was there when the third fire happened, and it was a difficult task. A difficult task is trying to salvage what is left of your belongings. Olson said firefighters or a PSO will check properties where fires have been extinguished every one to two hours for 24 hours after a fire. Chief John Bostwick stated, but it basically reinforces past practices. Now, I want to know exactly what the fire monitoring policy was before our house burned down. Obviously, Jeff Olson noticed a very obvious flaw with fire monitoring procedures. Why else have a safety meeting and change policies? Policies, according to Chief Bostwick, were already part of past practices in the first place. Acknowledging the need to change policies shows negligence and the failure to monitor a fire scene, and because of that choice, my family and I lost our home and everything in it. Our entire yard is a safety hazard as there is debris everywhere, as well as underground, glass, metals, rusty nails, and when it rains, it comes to the surface. The cost to fix our yard is $10,000. Our insurance company claims it's too much and only wants to pay us $500. Our kids can't play safely anywhere in our yard until we have this work done. Mayor Jim Brown, you wrote me a letter after my family's loss expressing, if there's anything my office can do, please ask, and I will do my best to accommodate. I'm a dad, a husband, and a resident of Cedar Falls. I am asking the city, my city, to take responsibility for a loss that was preventable and negotiate a claim with us and not end up in court. I reiterate the fact that Jeff Olson announced the change to current fire monitoring policies after we lost our home because we lost our home. We do not want to be Cedar Falls' lesson learned, nor an example of what's not going to happen the next time. It happened to my family. Policies are past practices. It's time to take responsibility for Cedar Falls' family that suffered a great loss with pain and suffering, loss of wages, situational anxiety, stress, and depression. This was not an unfortunate incident. It was our home. We refer to the city as the Titanic. It's a sinking ship without adequate lifeboats, and we feel like we're the steerage.
Thank you, Mr. Solanick. I will open it for council if anything in the previous speaker. Questions or otherwise? Anyone further here for public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we will adjourn to the executive session. Thank you. Good night.